Hi, good evening. I'm Cora. This is a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. This is sunshine law. Local call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Dr. Maruli?
Here.
Mr. Mirdinger?
Here.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Lepani?
Here.
Vice Chairman Collins?
Here.
Thank you. First order, disposition of minutes, September 10, 2015. I believe I was absent and Dr. Maruli was absent. So was Dr.
The eligible members are Mr. Mirdinger, Mr. Julian, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Mr. Lepani.
So move. Second. Local call, please.
Mr. Hold on.
Mr. Hold on.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Mirdinger?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Lepani?
Yes.
And that's it.
That's it, yep. You're doing good. We'll keep you around.
Yeah.
All right, next order of business is the disposition of resolutions. Really?
Nothing.
There's nothing here. No planning board business. Special community ports business from the floor. Seeing none. Consideration of ordinances, none. Public hearing. Cornerstone Professional Center, 751 Highway 206 Associates LLC File 15-PB-13-SRV is adjourned to November 19 with re-notice. They had some issues noticing their neighbors. Any questions? All right, none. William Haney, next up, File 15-PB-12-MRV. This is Block 145.03, Lot 37, formerly known as Block 145, Lot 24-674, River Road. Applicants seeking minor subdivision approval, C-bulk variance for relief from the front yard setback at proposed Lot 37.02, existing condition, and a waiver for access on a collector road to subdivide an existing 10.404 acre lot, acre flag lot into two lots. A proposed 7.15 acre Lot 37.01 and a proposed 3.24 acre Lot 37.02 on property in the rural slash suburban residential zone district. That's a mouthful. Batter up.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Members of the board.
Yes.
No.
I don't know. It didn't sound like it. I can hear you, but I don't know if anybody
else can. Mercury is in retrograde, so anything with electric is not working.
History, if not speaking into the mic, so. My name is Alexander Fisher from the law firm Moro, Savo, Camerino, Grant &amp; Schalk. I'm here representing William Haney, who's a resident of town, lives at 674 River Road, Block 145.03, Lot 37. Mr. Vice Chairman, you accurately summarized the application and the relief sought in it. One of the interesting things about this lot, and I'll have Mr. Ford testify shortly, is that it does have a 50-foot wide access drive, which was designed for a greater subdivision, which we are not seeking. So with that being said, I'd like to first swear in Mr. Ford.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the hope of God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, Licensed Professional Engineer and Planner in the state of New Jersey. Here before this board.
I think so.
You're on safe ground today.
Okay. We're not proposing any white fences. The application, as was summarized, is on River Road in the RS zoning district, which actually has a minimum lot area of 1.5 acres, but in cases where you don't have public sewer and water, which is this portion of the RS zone, the minimum lot size is two acres. What's being proposed is to subdivide the 10-acre parcel into two parcels, one three-acre parcel and the remaining lands of seven acres. There is an existing house on the property, which the applicant lives in, that's Mr. Haney's residence, that'll remain as-is, as would the driveway access to that lot and house, which has basically a shared access driveway with the adjoining parcel on Lot 36. None of that would change. There's no construction proposed as part of this application. This is simply to create a buildable lot at the rear of the property, the seven-acre portion to be subdivided off, so that Mr. Haney could sell that parcel. And that is envisioned to be used as something like a farmette, since it is as substantial in size and is currently predominantly in a mowed hay field at this point in use. As I stated, we don't have public sewer and water, so we have performed onsite soil testing, which was witnessed by the local health department. There's a suitable site identified on the plan that was submitted as part of the application, as well as the soil test data for an onsite septic system. And there would be a private well supporting the residence, which is shown conceptually on the plan at the edge of the field near the wooded area, so that we would envision not encumbering or disturbing the wooded portion of the site substantially, while it also being able to preserve a substantial portion of the field portion of the site, so that it could continue to be used for an agricultural purpose, perhaps grazing of animals or horses.
Horses.
What was described by Mr. Fisher is that when Mr. Haney first brought this potential subdivision to my office and we discussed it, we realized quickly that really the way the property's laid out with the 50-foot wide access and the way it's even configured, at one point in time, it appears to have envisioned potentially a public road access within that 50-foot, I'll say, right-of-way, and supporting a more substantial development for five lots. That's not what is being sought, or simply looking for the minor subdivision to create one new buildable house for one new house, one new buildable lot for one new house. It is on River Road, which is a county road. We've received a August 18 review memo from the Somerset County Planning Board. Will satisfy the comments in that report as a condition of approval. And as your planner, Mr. Maske, pointed out, there's two comments in that report that are worth highlighting. First is that they suggested that the existing driveway, which we intend to use for servicing the existing house as well as the new house to the rear by a shared access easement, is that a shared access easement driveway agreement be drawn up in a legal format to spell out exactly who and how that shared access driveway is to be maintained. And then they also suggest that at the very entrance of the driveway off of River Road, that a short portion, about 25 feet back from the road, be widened such that it'd be about 18 feet wide, so that if a car is waiting to exit the property, another car could enter the property to avoid that conflict, and we would agree to do that. There is one variance as part of the application, and that is for the existing setback for the existing dwelling. The ordinance requirement is a 75-foot setback, and the existing dwelling is 69.72 feet from the property line. That's an existing condition. It's not being created or exacerbated by this application. The only way to remedy that would be to demolish or move the existing residence, which is a substantial hardship, and the existing condition has been that way for quite some time, since the first construction of the house, and has not, and we don't believe will cause any substantial detriment to the public good or our neighbors, nor the intent or purpose of the municipal land use law or your ordinances. There was a request that we clarify the driveways. As I've said, the existing driveway would remain as-is. There's an envision that that driveway would then, when the house at the rear of the property on the new lot is developed, that driveway would just simply be extended to the rear of the property to service that new dwelling. And that would again be through a shared access driveway easement until it's solely on the new lot at the rear, and then it would become the owner's responsibility of that property to maintain. We've received a September 18 review memorandum from your engineer, Bill White from Mazor Consulting. We would agree to any condition of approval to satisfy all his comments to his satisfaction. And there were no, what we believe, substantial comments. It was more housekeeping items, such as will the application be filed by deed or file map? We would file a deed for the two new lots. That would be recorded in that county clerk's office, those types of comments.
Any comments from the board, questions?
I mean, just for the record, we met with the applicant this past Monday, and we, the environmental commission reviewed the application. There was no environmental disturbances that were discussed or identified, no wetlands or no other features that were of concern to us. So I don't see Debbie Boyer's report, but it was kind of a quick turnaround from Monday to tonight. I know she was going to put one together, but I was at the meeting, so I can verify that.
I'll take your word.
Okay, you got it.
Anybody else? Mike, anybody? Any comments from David? You have a comment, please?
Thank you. I just wanted, would like you to address my comments 3.2 and 3.3. 3.2, it came to our attention that one of the neighbors came to our office, the owner of the property, Lot 36, to the west, directly to the west of this property, which is not part of the subdivision. Apparently, his driveway, although it comes across the front of his property, it goes into the subject property and back to his front door. So how are you going to accommodate that?
None of that will be changed. The existing condition can remain as-is, and Mr. Haney has no objection to the way it's operated and functioned for all these years.
Do you know if there's any kind of official easement granting him access?
I believe that the deed that was submitted does have a right-of-way granting access.
To that lot.
To that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then 3.3, follow-up. So you're going to have, this driveway is going to serve, in essence, three houses, correct?
Correct.
And are you widening it, removing any trees, in any way reconfiguring it to serve the three houses?
No, only the county requests to widen that short portion at the very bottom of the entrance. The rest of the driveway would remain as-is.
Thank you.
Is the widened portion going to be paved also?
Yes.
Good. Didn't show that.
All right, open the, open up comments to the public. They hear a motion. So move them. Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Open the public. If you have a question, it's for the witness, and it's for the witness only on what the witness testified to. No, you can't just go off.
That'll be later.
That'll be later afterwards. You can make any comments you want, but for right now, if you have comments to make or questions, just for what the witness had to say.
Yes, I have a, I have a question.
You can step forward, yeah.
Are you, are we, no, me?
Just wait, just wait. Just come forward, and you need to use the microphone, so he can get you on the tape. Don't be nervous, no. We don't bite.
Yes.
At least not much.
Lawyers do, but we don't.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Neenart.
Could you spell your last name, please, for the record?
N as in Nancy, I-E-N as in Nancy, A-R-T as in Tom.
Thank you.
Cynthia Neenart. I'm from Hidden Hills Farm, which is the preserved farm that borders the property in question, and I have a question to Mr. Ford about the environmental impact. The Duke Estate is within a close proximity of our farm, and we often see the eagles come from the Duke Estate to our farm, and they land in the trees on this property. And it's within proximity for them to go from the Duke's Estate across our farm to the Raritan River to fish. And I want to know, I was, I was coming to the planning board to ask or to verify that an independent certified environmentalist has done an impact statement as to where these eagles, if they're nesting in those trees, or if they're using that property to hunt on in relation to the Duke Eagles.
Am I working? Okay. The minor subdivision didn't require an environmental impact statement, so the answer is no. There hasn't been a certified environmental person to review eagle landing or nesting onsite.
Doesn't seem to be a requirement. It doesn't seem to be a requirement.
But 100,000 people viewed the Duke's Estate Eagle Cam, so there's a lot of people that are interested in those eagles that are born and where they hunt and fish. And within one mile of that nest is considered, if you look under the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, they have a certified area that they list for eagles, because eagle's an endangered species, and they, they list within a certain period of the nest that this is an environmentally sensitive area, and I would like to have an impact done, whether it was required or not because of the planning, because of the number of people that are interested.
Sorry, that's, it's not going to be happening.
Can I just?
All right, you can, yeah.
Wouldn't that need to be addressed at the time that that lot is, is built on? So there's no, so there's no building that's being done on the lot now, but isn't it true that at some point in the future?
No, there's none. There's no reason for it.
That's what I, that's my question. Would there be a reason for?
Right, but even now, we're just drawing the legal line here, so.
Yeah, they're just drawing lines and forming new lots, and there's no requirement for it. And I'm not an expert. I'm in code law. Dave could attest to this, because I always reach out to him for help, but there's no requirement if somebody decided to build a house on that to do that either.
Even though the eagles are protected.
Ma'am, you would have to do that almost anywhere near Hillsboro.
Well, no.
And any neighborhood surrounding that area.
Oh, sorry.
You would have to do that almost anywhere, so I'm sorry.
This is within one mile of the eagle's nest, which is listed as a protected zone for eagles by the Department of Environmental Protection. I don't think it would hurt to hire or to have an.
I think like the, I think the steps would be, what we're saying tonight, though, is there's not going to be any development on this application. All we're doing tonight is drawing lines, so if the applicant decided to build on that particular area that you're talking about, he'd have to come back in front of the environmental commission, and at that point, we could review what you're talking about. I don't, you know, those are things that, off the top of my head, I don't, I can't answer, because I know this disturbed, you know, endangered species, there are certain regulations, but, you know, we'd have to kind of research, not take verbatim what you're saying, but we'd have to get the exact laws.
That's why I asked for an environmental report. I didn't say that I was an expert.
So we, we would have to make that decision when, at the proper time, and tonight's not the proper time to do that.
And I, I don't understand. We're, we're here at the planning board, so is there another planning board hearing to build a house? Or if it requires no variances, then there's no hearing?
Right.
Right, tonight there's not.
Yeah, there's no plan to build on that tonight.
Tonight.
But, but is there a required meeting when they decide to build on?
Yes, yes. So that's a different application, so.
But if, but if there's no, I don't think so. I think if there's no variant, he's questioning that statement.
Why would there be a planning board hearing? Why would there be a planning board hearing if there's a house to be built on that? There is no requirement for a planning board meeting on an application to build a house that meets the criteria of the established zoning based on this subdivision. Now, if the board would like to require the applicant, as part of a condition of building, to provide that such a statement prior to the granting of a, of a building permit, it's within the board's purview to do so.
So I'm asking the board to please require the letter from an independent certified environmentalist as to the impact of the eagles from the Duke's Estate now.
Once a year, the town has to, we have a, a map that puts airport zones. It puts all the different zones onto that map. David, what's it called, the?
GIS. The airport hazard zone?
No, the, the map, the GIS.
Yeah.
And it's automatically, we're hooked into Trenton, and it's automatically updated. And if there was a zone that would inhibit us from doing anything, it would show up. David, is there a zone, an eagle one mile around Duke's?
Well, it would have to show up as one of DEP's threatened endangered species habitats, so we would be able to look at one of those maps, and it would indicate if the area in question is, is a habitat, whether it be eagle or whatever, other than threatened endangered species, but DEP does have those maps.
And we know that, we know that there's an eagle nest at the.
This is a resolution, too.
Oh, yeah.
And, and 100,000 people have viewed the camera, so we, it has to be listed as an endangered species nest.
We can make it part of the resolution, that this is investigated as a condition of the approval when they go for the building permit, because you don't, I doubt if you're going to need a special, whatever you want to call it, report on it, but it needs to be investigated and confirmed whether there has to be something done.
Yeah, I would concur.
Yeah, so we can make it part of the resolution with these, just an investigation of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, so it, I would, it's in the recordings?
Yeah, when we do the resolution, we'll put that on there.
Okay.
Ma'am, do you have any paperwork you might, regarding this issue? Do you have any pieces of paper? Or do you want to make a comment?
Can I respond to that? I mean, I would just note that the board, I'm not familiar with the board requiring an environmental eagle investigation for any other properties.
I didn't say an eagle investigation. I just said an investigation into the requirements of this or suggestions. It doesn't mean that there's a direct report.
We're not going to, so in other words, let me get this straight, because I just want to understand it. We're not asking for a study. We're not going to require the applicant to commit to any expense other than asking the town to check the GIS to see if.
No.
Then what are we doing?
Well, I'll tell you.
What we're, what we're.
Come on.
What we're suggesting is that prior to the approval of a building permit, that the applicant provide to the applicable parties in the planning department alike necessary information regarding the GIS requirements for the situation in question regarding the eagle nesting as it relates to DEP.
It's not just the GIS requirements. It would be suggestions by NJDEP, but this could go right to the planning department. It doesn't have to go to the planning board, and the planning department could see if there's a problem.
Yeah, it's really quite simple. DEP maps all endangered species habitats, including and particularly bald eagle habitats. If you go to the DEP website, you can look up the maps, and it'll show you if this is or is not in a bald eagle habitat. If it is, it should be addressed in some manner. If it's not, it's not. But it is all mapped at DEP, the habitats.
Hypothetically, and I guess this is on the record hypothetically, if it is in the bald eagle zone, it doesn't preclude somebody from building a house.
If it is?
It does or it does not?
No, it would.
Thank you.
Wait, I, I don't think, excuse me, Mr. Planner.
You need to speak, give them the mic for a second. I think, I think the planner's saying that, that it needs to be investigated as to what, as to what the eagle habitat is and what the range is for the eagle habitat.
And he also just said that it doesn't preclude the fact that the owner of the property can still build a house there, even if it is or isn't.
It would still have to, if it is in the habitat, they would still have to indicate that building a house in thus and such matter would have a negative impact on the eagles.
Correct, correct. And they might have to change the way they're going to build the house, or they might have to change something as to the.
Ma'am, this whole conversation is, is a future conversation. It's not on the application.
It is, it is a requirement. You, you determine.
No, we haven't, no, we haven't taken a vote, and we haven't had an ordinance, we haven't had a resolution discussed yet.
Okay, so when you get to the resolution, it's about having an impact assessment?
No.
No.
When we get to the resolution?
Yes.
We'll tell you what it is.
Okay, fine.
It's the decision of the board, not the decision of an individual.
Okay, I was just trying to understand exactly what the.
It has to be looked into, is what it.
Exactly, I'm fine with that. It has to be looked into is, is a good answer for me.
Just as a suggestion, if my board may want to just indicate that the applicant must verify with DEP mapping whether the project or the lot is or is not within a bald eagle habitat as mapped by DEP prior to getting or applying for a building permit.
That's something you're trying to be agreeable to.
Mr. Ford knows very well how to look that up, so it's not.
I think what we're talking about is if this property today, right now, in agricultural purpose, Mr. Haney could apply for a building permit today for a barn bigger than this house, and whatever criteria he would have to adhere to as part of that application, this same building permit application would have to adhere to.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not aware of an ordinance that, or a DEP requirement, that you, you can't cut down a tree because an eagle might land in it, but I think that there are restrictions if you cut down a tree where an eagle is nesting. And there are foraging and habitat regulations tied into an eagle nest and its close proximity to where it might forage for food. We're not in a flood plain. We're not in a wetland. We're not in a floodway. We're not in a flood hazard area. We've checked all the natural resource inventory maps for the township, and there are no critical areas on this site at all.
Did you, did you know about the bald eagle when you came to the environmental conference Monday night?
I'm probably one of the 100 viewers of the Eagle Cam at the, as well as everybody else.
So it's all right.
But the, where, the location of the nest on the Duke's Estate is supposed to be a secret, and people don't know where it is. Otherwise, 100,000 people would be tramping over there. So the fact that they, so the fact that it's within.
I know exactly where it is.
Well.
Well, the, the DEP maps, I don't, don't identify where the eagle nest is, but as Mr. Maske has indicated, the DEP maps do indicate the range and the foraging and the restricted areas.
Correct, so we'll.
And we can provide that information to the town planning office.
Thank you.
And I have one more comment.
Can you wait till afterwards, because this is not a comment period? This is just questions.
No, I have a comment to his idea that building a barn is equivalent to building a house. Okay, building a barn in terms of structure, size, and square footage could be equivalent to a house, but the impact to the area is much different, because when you build a house, you've got cars driving in and out. It's much different space usage than when you build a barn. So if Mr. Haney was here requesting to build a barn, that would be a much different conversation than we're having today when you're requesting to build a house. So I.
We're not requesting to build a house.
More intensive use, couldn't you?
Could have.
I would think a barn's a more intensive use. I'm sorry. I don't know, maybe, I don't know anything about farming, but I go home, I go to sleep, I wake up, I go to work.
Yes.
I got a farm, I got a barn, I'm going in and out of that thing all day long.
Do you have a barn, and you're, and you're bailing 50 hours and bailing 10 days?
Ma'am, I'm not going to have any more discussion about it. If this is all the question you have, thank you.
Well, then, we still have open for public comment.
Yes.
I'm sure there's some other people in the audience that have public comment.
Anybody else have any further questions for this witness on the testimony?
Just on the testimony of Mr. Ford.
I love his right to, you just can't expect him from commenting. She can come back later. I want to give other people a chance. Anybody else like to speak to the witness's comments or testimony? All right, close.
Got all your witnesses, Steve, and Mr. Ford?
Close. Motion. Close, motion to close public comments?
No.
No. Public comment.
Now we can go to public, nobody else have any questions? Anybody have any questions? All right, now we're open to, anybody can speak up.
I got one question. The, Mr. Ford, the existing property as it is now, is it a open lot or is it a wooded lot primarily?
Primarily open.
Is it, is being farmed with, for hay?
Right.
So theoretically, there's a consideration that no trees will be disturbed in building a house on this property?
With the exception of the extension of the driveway and connecting to the existing driveway, no. We don't envision tree removal for the, for the house itself.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the public would like to step forward and make, make any comment on the application? Please.
Come up to the microphone and say your name.
You can use one of the live mics, I don't know which one's working.
My name's, my name's Matthew Nienart, and I'm also, that was my wife, and we are the owners of Hidden Hills Farm, which is borders of the property that's in question. So my, my comment is, we, we had the NRCS at our, we had a grant through them to do a lot of environmental impact on our farm for water drainage and for pasture maintenance.
Who is the NRCS?
National Resource-
Natural Resource Conservation Services, a grant located by the Department of Agriculture.
That.
Oh, you need, you need to say it into the microphone, please.
Have to repeat that? The National, National Resource Conservation Service, and it's a division of the United States Department of Agriculture. So what they had done for us was to prevent, we had a lot of erosion on the land, so we had reseeding, we reseeded a lot of our pastures to prevent that from happening. We had flooding within our barn and everything, so by regrading and everything, we, we got rid of that problem. My comment is, is if there is, houses built on that property, how do I not know that if there's an impervious footprint, which would be the house and the driveway and such, the water is going to get redirected somehow? And I just spent a lot of time and money to fix our property to prevent that from happening, and if a house goes up, as we've seen in other parts of Hillsborough during, especially with this storm that's pending, we've seen a lot of flooding due to overdevelopment and impervious surfaces. So how will that be addressed on that property during storms like this, where I wouldn't get the water flooding back into my property if I spent all this time and money to correct the problem?
You want to answer that?
Sure. This property's down slope of you. It slopes, the high point is on the southern portion of the property. The farm that, that they're referring to that's preserved is to the south of us, so they're upslope of us, so they're, I think all the water really would drain from their property onto ours, not in the opposite direction. That being said, the application doesn't include the development of house, but when the house is developed, it would include a plot and grading plan and stormwater management facilities, whatever the township engineering department feels is warranted as part of the building permit application. So that would be handled at the time of the building permit application.
You also have a 10% impervious surface coverage.
Yeah, we won't be anywhere near that with the seven acre parcel of land, yeah.
And that's the minimum that we have in the whole township.
That's your answer? I guess from a layperson's point of view, I think you have to sort of trust the fact that when it comes to water and where it moves to, we've done a pretty good job with new developments in the years I've been here in terms of how they model, and we redirect the water from, you know, to cause flooding, and we've been on some very sticky, you know, subdivision fields, and I think we're-
Well, because of the property-
And DEP has to review these things, and our people review these things, our engineers review these things, so I guess you'd have to sort of trust that they're not going to send the water into your property and flood the property.
Because like right now, our, our driveway, which we had had to have regraded and everything because a lot of the water from the field funneled down our driveway and washed out, you know, tons of millings and roadstone, so after we had repaired all that, so far it's been pretty good, but that would be one of my concerns is that, you know, if it were to get-
Well, the 10%, it's only going to be a small portion.
Well, you know, they said that during Hurricane Floyd too, and we, you know, if the ground is hard, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, I don't want to have my driveway washed away during heavy storms because-
Sir, nobody does, but it's-
You can't preclude, you can't preclude people from-
It could very, the NRCS that they're referring to, the district out of Flemington.
Yeah.
It's unlike the Soil Conservation District we go to for soil erosion and sediment control plan approvals on Mills Town Road in Branchburg. That Flemington office addresses and helps farmers for agricultural uses.
I get that.
Because this property's seven acres, they could very well go to the same services part of their agricultural operation of the property for assistance.
I don't know what, what other answer you could be looking for.
No, I just-
Help protect.
Yeah, just to protect.
Well, it's on the record.
Okay, all right, that's what I want.
Thank you. Please talk into the microphone, make sure it's working.
Hello, my name is Lauren Mower, spelled M-O-W-E-R. I would like to bring up the eagle point again, but I'd like to bring it up in a way that I, sorry, I'm a little nervous, not a very good public speaker.
Doing fine.
But I'm very disappointed in the way that the board handled that situation. You know, we, as a young individual growing up in this town, I think we need to take more steps to conserve environment and not just push it off like it's not important.
It's a matter of legal, this is a legal body.
Yep.
We're not a debate society, we can't debate whether or not-
Well, I would just like, sorry.
You don't want to hear the answer. You want us to listen, but you don't want to hear the answer.
No, no.
Please, let me just finish. We're a legal body, and there's a, there's certain laws that are in place, and the, the point being, the application is for drawing plot lines. Whether or not there's a house going to be built or not, we can't say at this point. I do think the board addressed it properly and agreed that we're going to include that in our comments and on, in the resolution. It'll be something to identify or to, to draw, draw a line straight to the, the rights of the bald eagle and take into account your, you and your friends' desires. We didn't say no.
Mm-hmm.
But we, we can't tell the applicant today, you need to do this, when it's not our right to do that.
Certainly, but I think the matter should be taken a little more seriously, and I think that we would be ignorant to believe that they're just going to build a small little farmhouse and have an old grandma living in there causing no commotion. They put a couple houses over there, you've got teenagers, you've got parties, you've got issues. I mean, I'm not going to say that's exactly how it's going to go, we don't know, but I don't think, I think we should raise a little bit more concern about it.
Can I ask you this? Based upon the first, the comments, previous comment about a barn, Mr. Haney has a, has the right to go ahead now, not do any of this, and build a huge barn on that property within the pervious coverage rules, and this doesn't happen, and, and it's, it's a building on the property, and it has nothing to do with whatever about Duke's farms or the bald eagle, and you can't do anything about it?
Certainly, but don't you think he would outright come front and say, oh, it's all right, I'm going to build a barn? You know?
The point being is that I think because he came forward, he asked, he asked for us permission, and in that consideration, the board's considered it, and we, we're going to take a vote and decide how to spell that out.
Okay.
Lauren, plus you only built one house.
Yeah.
Not several houses.
One house per lot.
You only allowed one house on this lot, and that's it. But can I sell the lots?
Can I tell you, can I tell you why I'm, excuse me, why I'm concerned also? Because the applicant came before the environmental commission Monday night and told us that there was no environmental impacts. Now, we have nothing to go by but the applicant's word. We don't get any environmental impact statements, so we have to make a decision based on the testimony of the applicant. We asked the applicant, is there any environmental disturbances? And he said no. So basically, it was their word, you know, that they gave to us. Now they're coming here tonight, and all of a sudden we find out, well, yes, there was environmental impacts.
What's the environmental impact?
Which is an endangered, an endangered-
What's the environmental impact?
An endangered species.
It's just a subdivision.
That's what, that's what we're just, that's what we don't know.
But we have to find out.
But you have to find out. So, but Mr. Ford said that he was aware of that, and that's what I heard myself tonight. So that's what I asked him.
What, there's a bald eagle in Hillsborough? Yes.
No, on the property, I asked.
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm asking.
No, 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 we don't, we're not aware of any bald eagle nest on the property.
No, so that, that's what I asked.
What I understood it was, you know, concern about the bald eagle being nearby and whether cutting down a tree on this property might impact that bald eagle or not, or building a house on this property might impact that bald eagle or not, or whether the, the regulations that protect that bald eagle preclude building a house on this property or not.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead. And again, we're just-
That's what we have to figure out.
We're just asking for a minor subdivision here, not a site plan approval.
Yeah, but, but my point was that we went over it Monday night, and so Monday night you're saying that, you said there was no environmental impacts, and tonight we're asking, is there environmental impact? Is there a bald eagle? Is there an endangered species nest on the site?
No.
There's not?
No.
I never heard that there was. Where did you get the idea?
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
No, I think-
You're hearing from who?
This, no.
That's what I'm hearing from the public.
That there's a nest, that somebody's testified there's a nest on the property.
Right.
I did not hear that.
No, the, I think the comments are referring to the eagle nest that's on the Duke Farm Estate.
Okay.
Some distance to the west of this property on River Road.
Does that fall in that nesting zone, whatever the DEP, you know, whatever the DEP designates as that nesting zone? I mean, that's what I'm asking. I don't know, you know, because it's the first time I'm like hearing it, so I don't know like what zone that is.
Yeah, we're not aware of any restriction. For example, people, you're for mayor with the Duke Estates, there was quite a bit of vegetation revert, removed trees-
Right.
Right at the intersection of Duke Parkway West and Route 206. I don't know exactly where the eagle is, but I suspect that's even closer than, than this property is to where the eagle's at. I'm not saying that it's not a concern or something to be addressed, it's just like building a, we're not asking to put a house up without a building permit.
Right.
We're going to go get a building permit. If there's some other environmental regulation that we need to adhere to in order to build a house, we'll address that. We're not building a house, we're subdividing off seven acres where a two acre minimum is required, where one house could be replaced by three or four new houses. We don't feel the, the development is intense, and we're not aware of any environmental impacts or adverse impacts.
That's what I needed to be clear on, because I was not clear on-
It's not on this site.
Okay.
Actually, it's a three acre, because it's a flag lot, not a two acre.
Correct.
But if you had sewers and water, then you could be two acres, but I don't think you're going to have-
And we could correct all that by putting in a public road.
It's okay, we don't-
You'd have a heck of a time trying to-
It would be, it would, and we have realized that. I think we've taken, I think, the, the best route, the route that the applicant has chosen to take.
So I'm just saying, do we know what we got to do to move ahead in terms of looking at the GIS map and just verifying what needs to be verified? Well, that would be done at the time of a building permit, not for, not for a- So that, that will go in the resolution?
Something is going to go in the resolution, we haven't figured out exactly how to word that. Maybe Eric can create something for us.
He's working on it.
Okay.
His pencil's movement.
Is there, he's working on it. Is there anything else?
I guess we just want a little bit.
I think you got a lot more than a little bit.
Well, I, I guess we just would like to know what would be exactly in the resolution as far as, and then I guess you'll get to that. Okay.
We don't know.
We don't know until-
We have a discussion.
Great.
We have a discussion, and somebody adds a couple words, somebody adds a couple words, and then the attorney says you can't do that, and it doesn't happen until 30 days later-
Or longer.
Before the resolution is adopted too.
Okay.
So it also goes to their attorney, and they look at it. So the final resolution won't happen for another 30 days. Is that correct?
If not longer.
If not longer.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you. Oh, wait, we have to, wait, Eric, what do we do?
Let the public come up.
Let the public come up first, Mr. Haney, please. Take a breath.
Hello, Laura Schumpkes. I keep my horse at the Hidden Hills Farm, where they, and my concern is the realtor is advertising this as a four lot subdivision.
It doesn't matter what they advertise.
I mean, it's bad enough-
Is there a realtor that's, excuse me, is there a realtor that's having a listing for a four lot property? Do you have a MLS listing with a realtor?
It's not going to be, it can't be, so we're not applying for that, so.
Can't be a-
Well, could you bring that up and show it to-
Even if you're not applying for it, let's say the new one that goes in there buys the seven acres, and he decides he wants to develop it into three lots.
He would have to come back to the board.
Here, Lauren, here's the other piece.
Can we accept these pieces of paper?
Well, we should, show them to Mr. Fisher first.
And then show him, if he asks permission, he can give it to Eric. This just gets better and better. Yeah?
This paper was submitted as part of the application to demonstrate what could be developed here. I, I submitted this as part of the application as full disclosure of what the potential yield of this lot and property could be, and it was part of the support of the requested waivers, albeit technical, for having two lots use the same flag lot driveway. We could cure the two lots using the flag lot driveway by putting in a public road, a public road dedicated to the township, owned and maintained by the township, supporting up to four or five new houses.
So this is not a, I don't know.
That's not what the application is.
This is not a listing, then.
No, okay.
You, you stated this was a real estate listing.
Yes, it is, but my question is-
So you already have this?
No, but I-
The applicant buys the lot and decides they want to buy it up. The applicant buys the lot and decides they want to break it up into three more lots.
That's, that's not this application.
That's not, but is it a possibility that they can do that?
The answer is, there's a possibility they can do that. The board cannot address prospective issues that may or may not ever come before it as a condition of the granting or denial of this application. If an individual buys the lot and wishes to subdivide the lot further, they would have to come back either before this board or the zoning board, depending upon the application, to get approvals to do so. The mere granting of a lot line change does not grant a further subdivision other than what the application is.
Okay, but it is a possibility that they can do that.
There's a possibility of almost anything, ma'am, occurring if they conform to the laws of this, of the state and the township. There is no guarantee that something won't happen down the road.
Okay. Can we get this one? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And no other comments?
Mr. Haney, could I swear you in?
Raise your hand, please. Do you choose to hold the truth, the whole truth, and you want the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State your full name, spelling your last name.
William Haney, H-A-N-E-Y.
You can take a seat if you would.
You can take it.
And Mr. Haney, have you had prior dealings with the objectors, any of the objectors here?
Yes, I have.
And what were they?
They approached me about buying the property because they wanted to put cattle on it. They approached me about buying the property because they wanted to put cattle on it. They had a realtor contact me and offered me $125,000 for it, which I regret. It is my belief that they want to purchase the property because they want to grow their business.
Who's, who's they?
The people who testified. The piece of property behind me, which is the farm, the woman who spoke first came to me and said she wanted to purchase the property. Got a realtor, wrote up an agreement for $125,000 firm offer, and also stated we did this by ourselves, that we wouldn't have to pay the realtor. Motivation to me is very clear.
Eric, I'm a little unclear on how we can respond to this.
I think, Eric.
The answer is, the applicant has testified as to an issue involving the testimony of the individuals for folks, for the, for the, for the value of which the testimony is provided, which ostensibly is nothing related to this application, any more than the realtor discussion of what could occur because somebody has an MLS listing. It's also not relevant to the board. And Mr. Fish, Mr. Fisher put Mr. Haney up, it's on the record, but for purposes of the decision of this board, I would indicate to you, it has little to no relevancy to the decision of the board, any more than the MLS listing of a potential four lot subdivision, which is not before this board either.
All right, I have nothing further.
You have any other witnesses?
No.
Public wants to get up on this one?
Does, would the public like to respond back to the witness and speak to Mr. Maske, Mr. Haney's comments? You're allowed to come back up and address the witness.
Just for the witness?
Just, yeah, well, no, they can...
For anything.
For anything, anything.
Anything now.
Well, if they haven't spoken.
State your name again, please, for the record.
Lauren Mauer.
Thank you.
I just want to say that seven acres added to our farm would not expand our business. It has, unless I'm building, you know, 100 more stalls, which we wouldn't be doing because we don't even have our stalls filled right now. We've got plenty of stalls, plenty of ring space, plenty of pastures to have our horses in, got empty pastures.
This board has not to say...
Oh, okay, well, I was just commenting.
The, the comment is noted that the neighboring, neighboring property apparently will not, quote, "have a positive impact upon obtaining the neighboring property," but frankly, folks, I'm getting a little concerned, we are clouding the record before this board with stuff that has nothing whatsoever to do with the application, and lib will present a bigger problem than the application itself.
And I thought it was a simple application.
Yeah, I think we all did.
I don't know why it's going to yell at because it was possibly all we talked about.
I apologize.
No, 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 not necessarily necessary.
You never have to apologize.
Now go have your dinner now.
You did very good as a public speaker.
Oh, great.
Yeah, maybe.
Excellent, thank you.
Anybody else like to respond to Mr. Haney's comments? All right, motion to close public?
Some of?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, comments from the board? Anybody have anything they want to state? Eric, you have one thing you want to say? David, are you okay with what's gone on as far as their agreements regarding...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose the following language.
Thank you.
The board requires that the applicant shall provide as a condition of a building permit, information as the bald eagle habitat in accordance with the requirements of the New Jersey State Department of Environmental Protections.
That's clean.
That's about what I was thinking about. Does the board have any...
I move the application.
Any seconds?
I'll second it. Hold on. As per the comments of our attorney.
With all the approvals and statement, and statements made by the applicant's engineer regarding committing to the comments of the town, of the planning board engineer and the planning board planner and the Somerset County Planning Board.
I move the application with the additional comments of our attorney.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Meruley?
Yes.
Mr. Murdinger?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Potty?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Bichette?
Yes.
We have a meeting scheduled for October 8th.
For the Board of Ed.
For the Board of Education. I guess I won't be here.
We meet the end? Please. We can't be here. Chairman, with no other items, folks, with no other items, Mr. Chairman, is there anything else?
There's nothing, I may look at the agenda, I'm sorry. No, no correspondence, motion adjourned?
So moved?
Second.
Don't forget about the 19th.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
November 19th.
Don't forget about the 19th, the meeting on the 19th.
November 19th.
No, October 19th.
No, November 19th.
Is it November or October?
October 8th, November 19th.